Hi, this is the zoning board of appeals on July 20th for a public meeting. Zoning Board, not a public hearing. Janice Datarca, I'm joined by Arthur Rossino, Hugo Cortada, Angela Smith Mahoney, and John De Priest, and Andrew Velez, and Pecan Kita. And I will do it next. So we're here to hear, this is again, not a public hearing, it is a public meeting. So we're here from you, this will, you'll have to do this all over again when you come in front of us as part of the public hearing, at which point the public will also be invited to speak all they want. The public at this point may or may not speak, it will depend on who's here, but it's not a requirement as part of the public meeting. But if there's not a lot of people who want to speak tonight, I would probably give them the opportunity to speak for five minutes, give us their point of view, and then encourage them, of course, to come back to the full public hearing. When we get started, I'm going to ask you just to push back a little bit so that we can actually see the...
Oh, see it?
No, don't push back.
Do you want to slide down the chair each?
Maybe that might actually be...
Thank you.
If you need Spanish translation, please see the gentleman in the corner.
So instead of listening, open your computer.
Okay, so, talk to us.
Janice, thank you very much. My name is Paul Crowley, I'm the Deputy Commissioner of Real Estate, Leasing, and Public Private Partnerships, and I have the good fortune of working with Ashley Emerson, who is the Senior Project Manager and responsible for the domiciliary. I've been advised to stay on script, so I think we've got a couple of audibles. We're going to transition our comments to John, and then John will introduce our partner Penrose. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to bring us to speed. I was asked to give a little bit of an update of all the ongoings on the top of the hill. And just a brief, the history of the home was comprised of the Quigley Building dating back to 1949, the long-term care facility, and the domiciliary, with nine buildings, both operated by the Commonwealth to provide housing and supportive services for our veterans. Both the long-term care facility and domiciliary are undergoing significant changes, that's the reason we're here tonight. The Commonwealth currently, this isn't Penrose's project, is replacing the long-term care facility with a new, modern community living center with cutting-edge resiliency and sustainability features to meet the demands of the environment on the way forward. Big goal of the prior administration and current administration. The features of the CLC for resiliency and sustainability include geothermal wells, photovoltaic panels, I got through it, a high-performance envelope, and high-efficiency building mechanical systems. The ultimate goal for the project is to be a lead silver net-zero building. At the CLC, the experience of our veterans will be enhanced. They will have dignified private spaces, 154 private rooms, 247,000 square foot buildings, six levels, two pods of 14 units each, and will have connections to nature, very engaging spaces. I don't know if anyone's had an opportunity to go through it, we have absolutely spectacular business of the city, the harbor, and 360 views. And when it's completed, the residents and the community will also benefit from a restored long park. A little bit off-script, we, you may know we have temporary CFO, and the game plan is to start moving the initial veterans into the CLC come the, I'd say September-ish, as early as September, and ultimately, we're underway. Let's see. The work on the site, once the transition of all residents is completed, will go into 2025. Now, for our partner and our project that we're here tonight, DCAM is extremely excited about advancing the vision for the redevelopment of the historic and storied campus that ensures all existing veterans will have access to high-quality housing and services while we continue to serve the ever-changing veteran population. For this redevelopment, the Commonwealth has sought out a public-private partnership with the goals of renovating the buildings into affordable veterans' preference housing, provide services to our veterans, and management of the housing. Of note, when DCAM seeks out a development partner to facilitate the development, we look to our partner to advance the municipal permitting process. Together, these two projects, we hope, will serve as a model for dignified housing and long-term care that our veterans richly deserve. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to John De Priest, Director of Permanence and Land Use.
Thank you. I'm just going to, for the board, this is a, developers coming in, in the R1 district, is coming to you as a planned development. Some of you have been working on planned development, you may remember, we did it for the Home Depot site, the Dick Mall, for One North. And the purpose of the planned development is for a, to allow the larger scale development to be built in a holistic manner. They plan for the entire site, and the board can approve it as, a whole bunch, or they can approve it in phases. The process that you're going through is still the same, there'll still be a zoning board hearing, planned board hearing, and zoning board vote on the second one, still the same process. The only difference here is that the dimensional regulations are set by you, by special worker. You don't need any varies as to height, or the normal dimensional regulation, because all these, by special worker. I'm still providing the appropriate report, the analysis, and the appropriate part, and it's still all over the same process. R1 district is minimal, is two, I mean, two families on the middle of, sorry, I'm not scruffy, and you have at least four acres in the now, and development of the site is well over four acres. This is an informational need only, really should go into the merits of the project, that can be done at a public hearing, so that everybody can have opportunities to come and speak.
Janice Datarca, do we expect it, are they going to be in front of us next month?
So we do have to speak submitting in August for your September.
For September, okay, thank you.
Tomorrow's the 2nd of September.
So I think before we get into the presentation, maybe you could just formally introduce yourself. Yes, I think we want to, so, I think we want to introduce also the rest of the team. So my name's Karen Chell, right, from Penrose, the project manager for this.
Charlie Adams Chantellos, a senior legal teacher.
JP?
JP Charo, a product architecture architect.
William Saad, the non-shape architect. Greg Albersoni, the non-shape architect.
Phil Martin, engineer, chairman, civil consultant.
I'm Ashley Anderson, I'm the Senior Project Manager at DCAM, the call, and we are also joined today with our fellow, Robert Engel, the Acting Superintendent.
I'm Robert Engel, I'm the executive director of Home and House, executive of Home and Public Services, and I'm also the Acting Superintendent.
So as you can kind of hear, right, there's a lot of kind of Commonwealth partners, Penrose, and our development, because this is really a partnership, and there's a lot of efforts that we're going to undergo together to make sure that this transition and this redevelopment happens as smoothly as possible. But with that, we can get started and dig into this project. So this is kind of some images of some of the folks in our development team, we're meeting the architect today, as well as our civil engineer, and our land use architect, but in addition to that, this property is envisioned to be managed by Penrose Management Company, which is our affiliated parking management company. And we have a service partner called Soldiera that focuses on veteran services, because we recognize how important that is for campus, like the veterans' home. This is also going to be a historic, adapt, I guess, renovation project, so we have historic consultants on this, and we will be complying with state and federal, so federal National Park Service and state historic, Massachusetts Historic Commission guidelines for renovating and facilitating historic properties, because they will be providing funding for the project. So I want to start out with kind of our commitments and our priorities for the project, and the first one, I know, this is usually a question that, because the first question that comes to mind, is that what's going to happen to the residents that are there right now? There's 127, 128 residents there, of our last count, living on campus, and our commitment is that all the residents will be able to stay on campus during the redevelopment, because we're phasing the project, and you'll see the basic plan and after. So everyone will have the first priority to return to renovated units, so our goal is that we try to minimize their, any impacts on them as much as possible by keeping them on the hill, rather than entire, we block it. So I'm just going to go through these, it'll be up on consent, veterans' preference for the entire site, so any veteran that applies will be at the top of the list. There's going to be service provision to...
But others can apply other than veterans, is that what you're saying?
That's, that's what I'm saying. Service provisions to ensure long-term residence success, so our service provider has already started meetings with residents, we've had small group meetings, and eventually, they'll transition into more individualized meetings to understand the needs of the veterans that live there right now. But our service provider, Soldiera, has been providing services to veterans for over 20 years, they have properties across Massachusetts where they're fully occupied with veterans. They also have veteran preference for their properties, and they feel like there's no dearth of veterans, that they aren't connected to a lot of veterans, to apply and fill the units that we're proposing to create here. I already touched on the existing residential stay-on-site, without the redevelopment. We're going to renovate the existing domiciliary building, where they're more SRO style, not all units have individual bathrooms and kitchens, we're going to create units with individual bathrooms and kitchens, so they'll be studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms. We're also trying to create more diverse units, where we're adding two bedrooms where they currently aren't, because there was a priority of the Commonwealth to create opportunities for veteran families to also live on this campus. And lastly, we're going to create a one-stop-shop resource center, so we recognize that when veterans have to go to a lot of different places to access their services, it makes them more difficult. For our goal is to create space on-site, in what is currently the headquarters building, which Elch Hill is the site plan, to try to consolidate some of those services, allow service providers to come on campus, so that they don't always have to go outside for So in terms of what parcels this encompasses, it's the parcels that are highlighted in, or outlined in red, the Quigley Building and the CLC is a different project, this redevelopment project is solely focused on the domiciliary buildings, as well as the parking lot that is off of, at the former Warren and Summit. So this is an aerial of the current buildings, and I just wanted to show this as a before and after of, this is kind of from a similar view, the proposed condition in our fourth phase redevelopment, where almost all the buildings will be kept, the only, the evolution that we're doing is a one-story incinerator building between these two, and there's a walkway between headquarters and Keppel that is a kind of metal walkway, above-ground walkway that we're demolishing. Aside from that, we're not demolishing any buildings, and we're adding, we're adding, I think the architect will talk a little bit more about what we're adding, and how that addresses accessibility issues.
Can you just talk to the board a little bit?
So this is the site plan, and I will let the landscape talk about the landscape aspects, but I just wanted to talk about overall, the goal is to create a more campus feel, and to add green space, and to add kind of measures to allow to be more pedestrian-friendly, because right now, the road on Crest Avenue is kind of wide. So just starting from the corner of Crest Avenue, once you enter the site, one of the first amenities will be a, we're hoping to have a veteran-run cafe, but we call it fairly small, and just be kind of takeaway-to-go, but then the patrons of the cafe will spill out into a kind of plaza area where they'll be seating and shading, so that's one of the amenities that we're hoping to create here. Behind this is the current power plant, provides steam power for the entire site. Our goal, at the end of the four phases, when the, it will no longer be steam-powered, we're going to decommission the power plant, but keep the structure and turn it into a veterans' museum and art center. And then going along Crest Avenue farther down, for the Commodocks House, we're going to keep that as a management office, so that's where our property manager will sit. And next to it, we're going to create something called the Victory Garden, which is, it's basically, because we heard that gardening and planting is something that a lot of U.S. residents have a great interest in, so we wanted to make sure we create that out here on-site. So this is where the headquarters building is, it's 91 Crest Avenue, and that's where we're proposing to have a veteran resource center, which is the one-stop shop. And then we're going to have kind of courtyards and display areas that Lansing would probably go to a little more depth. So in our initial response to the proposal, this was our first thought of what the veteran resource center would have, and we're having small group meetings with residents, just to understand, does any of this make sense, are there other amenities spaces that they're prioritized? But the goal here was to create offices where different service providers can have meeting space with residents, kind of a professional training room, a computer lab, which, the more we think about, might not make the most sense to a lot of people, don't necessarily go to computer labs and use a computer, or they use their tablet, or their iPhone, or a wellness room, or any kind of potential doctor's visits, or clinic visits, physical training, fitness room, a kitchen, and a large multipurpose room. So these are just our initial ideas as to what the one-stop-shop veteran resource center could be, but this is evolving.
Why would why a kitchen room? What's the kitchen room?
So, one of the, currently, a lot of veterans don't have their own individual kitchens, so they do get meals, so the goal is that in the future, we would provide some level, some level of meal they would want a day for veterans in the future, so having some sort of kitchen space could be useful for that.
But it won't be the, it would be staff providing that?
Yeah, it's not much, it's not, yeah.
In a lot, in almost all of our homes, we do like our construction, we have a kitchen and a lot of kitchen in there, so like, we can have events and parties, birthday parties and things.
But see, but those are two different things, and that's, when you, when we get close to this, you either have an area where you are providing food, and it's like an industrial kitchen, or it's not. So I mean, I would just want to clarify that.
From a zoning perspective.
From a zoning perspective, right, yeah, I guess.
Yep.
Right. The multipurpose room, my display, so you have vents, but industrial kitchens, an industrial kitchen.
Yeah.
So this is the phasing, and this is really important, part of our intent to keep residents on-site and manage where there is available units, and where there are empty buildings. So right now, sergeants and laundry don't have any residents in them, so that's why those two are prioritized for phase one. Commodocks is also empty, Williams doesn't have residents in it. So the goal is to create, focus the first phase above Crest Avenue, and we preserved phase four, this is phase four, because there are a lot of services that the residents currently take advantage of that operate out of phase four. But the whole phasing plan was created in order to help ensure that residents can stay on-site.
We already, the majority of the current residents live, show me.
So they live in Williams, they live in Keppel, and some, mixed in Sullivan and John Adams.
So you finished phase one and moved the phase two people into the phase one as you moved to phase two, I mean, is that, how are you making sure that people are...
So I think the goal, so Keppel actually has a good capacity, I think we would encourage individuals, so that they all move once, is to move into Keppel, and to move into Sullivan, so that, our goal, in addition to keeping them on-site, is also to not make this a construction site for longer than it needs to be. So you'll, I'll show on the schedule later, is that there will be overlap between phase one and phase two, because before phase one completes, our goal is to start construction in phase two, and this will mean that, we're going to encourage individuals who want to move into Keppel, and anyone who lives in John Adams to move in Sullivan and Keppel, so that we can have a lot of units online as soon as possible, and I'll show you the...
Carmen, can I, one more thing? So just to clarify, phase one would be in Penrose control, the other areas would still be owned and operated by the veteran Tomacelli, and so the movements there would be within their units and with their administration. So there's a operational transition that occurs. Sorry.
Can I, can I, is there going to be access for public transportation?
Yes, yes, so MBTI, do you want to, sorry, was the question, transportation, the access to public transportation?
So the stop currently is right here, I think it will remain in that area, we're considering what makes the most sense, because I know this, the parking lot is also being figured, especially after Quigley comes down, so that corner in itself does require a little bit more time.
Thank you.
So you can see here, so phase one is supposed to be 70 units, phase two will be 81 units, so if phase one and phase two, that'll be 151 units, so that would be sufficient if all the residents wanted to move into new units as possible, phase one and phase two would have enough units to accommodate all the existing residents. But overall, across the entire site, it'll be 241 units. Currently, the domiciliary actual capacity is supposed to be able to accommodate 300 individuals, so even though we're creating units that have individual bathrooms and kitchens, we're actually reducing what the technical capacity of the, like, campus is , the domiciliary.
Domiciliary, yeah. Why one, why one random three-bedroom?
So we, because this is a story, we have, we're kind of, a lot of the buildings are confined to what we, but we're able to fit this.
It's actually, it's a one bedroom, it's two.
This is zero, this is zero. There's one in the Commodocks, because the Commodocks is kind of like the old house, so that would be too much space for us, our management office, so we're able to fit a three-bedroom in there, because the configuration makes sense. So that, I think I go over to architecture.
Hi, everybody. So when we first looked at the campus, and we were addressing how to enhance this campus during the RFB, we were focusing on creating a place, because we had visited the site, and as some of you who know the site, it, there is no places where people can come together, it's not a place. So working with Roland Trail, we really put together thoughts about how can we create a place. It's now, the campus is very linear, you have Crest Avenue, then you have Hill, then you have Hill, Hillside, Hillside. So our work has been all along to see how can we make Crest Avenue a place where people could be together, at the same time, how can we transform the site to also be a place where other activities could happen, and you will see this also throughout the work that JP will, will, will talk about. As Carmen had mentioned, we created pockets of spaces right here, where we have a new cafe and a new plaza. This, this is a new reconstructed volume of an existing portion of the building that needs to come down with the incinerator in the building in new, but we're replacing it with a two-story new structure that will have the elevators and the stairs for sergeant building. As you go down Crest Avenue, there's also another new building that is inserted between the laundry and Williams. And we care, so as Carmen said, we, we did not demolish any existing historic buildings, we actually wanted to preserve all the historic buildings. But those of us who have been working in historic buildings for quite some time, they are very challenging, especially from an accessibility perspective. So we use the strategy of inserting a new building in between these two very small buildings to allow to, for this building to have the entrance, the mailrooms, the elevators, and provide the needed egress for this, these two very small buildings.
And then they'll open, you open on the side?
Exactly. So if you live here, or if you live there, you will come in through here, you'll have a new lobby, and you're sitting there, you have a new mailroom, and then you'll have the elevators that will serve that whole chunk of free estate. So this building is purposely designed in a way that does not overwhelm any of the historic structures, the height of it is not higher than the higher building, and we are very cognizant of the importance of the view of this building from the other side as you drive down Route 1, this is the first way to see our home, the home building. Remaining on that side of the street, we have identified that behind Williams Building, there is currently a way to create a one-deck, a two-level parking deck. Because of the geography, we can come into the parking from this side and, and serve this portion of the parking deck, and then from the other access, you can manage it, we'll talk about it more in detail, and it goes underneath to maximize the parking area on the side. On the other side of Crest Avenue, Sullivan remains unchanged but renovated, the headquarters again unchanged and renovated, and Adams Building unchanged and renovated. The addition happens here, and this is where a large majority of units of phase two will be built, this is what we call the East Parcel Building, and it's a whole new building, and again, it serves also, its lobby right here in between these two, serves also as an accessible entrance to Adams, and the new entrance for, for the East Parcel Building. Would you like this? The elevations are, let me just skip through, I went through the elevations correctly, I'm spoiling this, but, but, yeah, you pretend you haven't seen any. These are two elevations of the, of Crest Avenue, and this is the proposed connector, the first small building that I talked about between Williams and Laundry. And as you can see, the first portion of the building is a three stories, that is an odd to the lower, the lower architecture along the street, then it steps back, and then on the fourth floor, stepping backwards or from the street, you have, we are able to maintain this stadium of, of architecture throughout. This is the new reconstructed cafe of the plaza, and across the street, on the south side of Crest Avenue, this is the East Parcel Building, again, being very responsible to the height of the current buildings, the new building will not exceed the height of the Adams Building, which is this one right there. And at its intersection, there is the accessible entry entrance for this new complex. The hillside drops down, so we're taking advantage of the hillside to tuck in some additional units in the lower level of the building, but again, the building steps down again as the hill goes down to enhance the height of, of this building. And I think, I'll, I'll turn to, I'll go back.
I think you need to go...
Do you want me to go backwards?
No.
Okay, let's do, let's do these guys. So, I'll start for me. So this is a view from Warren Street, as you, Warren, Sonia, Warren's down there, as you go up, and this is a, a very conceptual view of the townhouse, so that will have the right angle left-hand side, and as you go this way, you access Crest Avenue on the right. As you arrive on Crest Avenue, this is a view of how the Cafe Plaza could be the new reconstructed volume here with, with the first little cafe, and actually on the side of there's a community room for the building residents, a lot of other space shaded in the area, and trees. And then this building will have a one-stop elevator to allow people, accessibility to the veteran art center, and the weekends building at the end of the photos, so there'll be an external elevator that will be bridging the two levels. Some of you know, it's, it's a... Some of you know that it's in Hillside, so we need to figure out accessibility. This is a view from really at the beginning of Crest Avenue. And those who have asked about public transportation, this is a, a suggestion of where a bus stop could be located at the beginning of Crest Ave. I think it's in this vicinity, but with the, with the landscape plan, it will be relocated more carefully. Yeah? So, doing some research at Soldier's Home and just looking at old photos and old drawings, it was interesting, we, we collected these images. Some of these are from mid-20th century, some of these are from the late 19th century. But what struck me is that Crest Ave and Soldier's Home, well, it's then called Soldier's Home though, a little more pastoral, a little more private. And of course, Chelsea has developed over time and it's become much more urban. So, this character is, not necessarily saying that we're trying to recreate this character, but we're trying to, our goal is to bring back some of that character to give more sense of shade in terms of more trees, to make it feel more comfortable for people to be outside. And that's really, as landscape architects, that's, we want people to be outside, to enjoy the outdoors and not just feel like they have to be inside all the time, which in our climate is very difficult to do. But I think if we provide some basic things, just like trees, for example, it can make a huge difference. But it's back to the site plan, this is very much at a conceptual level. But the idea, the main driver for us is to find places for trees and people outside. Whereas right now, it feels very much in a car dominated. And the person is, I would argue, lost in this place. Not only the residents, but also the neighborhood. For me, from my point of view, I feel like this area, this on top of this hill, doesn't feel connected to its neighbors. It feels very much disconnected and far removed from everyone. And this is our attempt to make those connections, reconnect this place. Of course, we realize that parking is always a huge issue. And we are trying to provide spaces off the street for the residents more than they currently have. And one way of increasing capacity off the street is to provide parking deck behind the buildings on Crest Ave. Fortunately, the area behind these buildings is at a floor further below Crest Ave. It is at a significant elevation below Crest Ave. And so, there's an opportunity to add a deck above that parking to increase capacity. But in addition to that, well, also the Town Homes, which is currently basically an open parking lot, with the addition of the Town Homes, when that is built, there will be space for those residents off the street. But also, we have lots of space on street, which is currently there now. So, we're not necessarily proposing to remove every on-street parking, but we will try to keep as much as possible. And also, as part of the CLC, there's, happens to be a lot, which is not technically part of our site, but it is adjacent to Kettle that could be potentially used for an on-street parking. And just, I mean, you can, we'll submit this and you all can review the numbers, but we'll have to confirm this, but I believe this increases the off-street parking from what they have now. Because currently, the only off-street parking is only behind the buildings on Crest Ave.
John, is the 18 in the back, is that part of what would be for the Town Homes? Or is that, would be that part of this plant development part, is part of this?
It would be part of the development. The Town, it in that...
The Town would have a catchback there.
Oh, okay. Well, you said the ratio of that would be twice, so maybe looking at all total parking relative to the neighborhood.
Okay. And we haven't heard about the Town Homes, which may have part of it on the south side, and then they have flash.
They own a garage, so those 18 spots behind the Town Home.
Certain houses. Yeah. Okay. That's basically...
One for you.
Yeah, that's for us. So, I don't count that as a little yes.
Sure. You're partial to this idea of...
But it's going to be one, I guess from coming in for zoning for the entire project, it includes the Town Homes. I guess we haven't talked about the Town Homes, but the Town Homes are part of this project. They're also going to be 100% veterans' apartments. Those are two bedrooms, and they're being created as part of the kind of goal to create more diverse living types for veterans.
But those are veterans, okay.
Yeah.
Now, when it comes to tree canopy, obviously, there are existing trees on the site, but to me, it seems like whether because of health or tree hazards, trees have been removed over time. And it feels much more open than it used to be. And they, they weren't replaced. So, this is the existing condition. We would like to say that we are proposing more trees for this place to create more shade, to make it more comfortable for people walking outside, being outside. Existing condition in terms of where residents gather now, some of this is, some of these areas are more or less programmed, and some of them are more informal, but they're, they're fairly small and close to building. The largest area is probably that stuff right there, but it's sloping. It's not where most people would hang out. Most people hang out fairly close to the Adams Building because there's a greenhouse there, it's flattened with retaining walls. So, that's interesting. But I would argue that it's probably a one-note kind of gathering, outdoor gathering. It's basically open space and not much else. We are trying to provide a variety of different kinds of open space for gathering. The Cafe Plaza, which is more urban and semi-private. Victory Gardens for the residents, which feels more private and passive. Courtyards that are close to the building for their immediate residents so that they have something close by. And also, we think there's an opportunity behind Sullivan for a play area for the neighborhood where this project could invite the neighbors, and not only the neighbors, but people, hopefully the new residents with families could use this, this area. So, trying to think about open space and making the connections and making it better not only for residents, but for the neighborhood. In terms of circulation, this is the existing, both pedestrian and vehicular. Crest Ave, two ways to be parking on both sides. There are some sidewalk connections to Crest Ave, but for example, on one side of this part of the campus, you can't walk around, around Crest Ave and downtown side, at least not on a sidewalk on your side. And on Summit Ave, our, our campus is disconnected from that vehicle as well because the sidewalks end. It's just a, basically a big road, and the parking over by the future site of the Town Homes is basically sea bass salt. Feels somewhat uninviting for the pedestrian. What we are proposing, trying to stitch back this campus to its neighbors and to provide the residents a way of freely walking around the site, not only within campus, but allowing connections to the neighborhood. And what we are proposing to add for a few of these connections are in the dark blue color. But we're also suggesting that we can change the traffic pattern of Crest Ave. And the primary reason for that, well, one is to have circular, vehicular circulation one-way, which helps calm or helps, I should say, for the pedestrian, it makes it a little more organized. But it also creates space for trees that we want to add on Crest Ave. And we have the street sections that will go through each of these areas to describe these changes. But on Crest Ave, what we're proposing are raised crossings to calm traffic in addition to making it one-way and making space for trees. We're going to go into the street sections in the street condition. This is on Crest Ave, looking towards CLC Building. We have Sergeant, the future cafe. Here, Sullivan to her left. It's very narrow. The building is very tight to the street, and the sidewalk is very narrow, especially on, on this side of Crest Ave. The overall dimensions of that street are here, two travel lanes, parking on both sides, small sidewalk, a little space for trees. In this one particular section, this happens to be the raised crossing at the Cafe Plaza. So, it's slightly different here, and we have another more typical Crest Ave street section. But the idea, this plaza anyway, is that this is a raised crossing, flush crossing for people to cross and hopefully calm oncoming traffic, but also creating the sense, adding, creating space for trees, which will help, I think, we hope, provide shade and comfort to pedestrians. A little further down Crest Ave, this is the laundry building. This is Sergeant's and Sullivan, which is further down the street. Again, very narrow, but this laundry building is almost at, right on top of the street. Typical street section in terms of dimension, this is what I mean, is that the laundry building is very close to the street. By pushing the street out, slightly narrowing and moving lane of traffic, you can add space for trees, widen the sidewalk, create a more generous, comfortable condition for pedestrians. And also, I, I think, I mean, I've heard arguments that is one-way traffic calmer than two-way? I would argue that maybe, perhaps not, but I think with the addition of trees, with the addition of wider sidewalks, there's more things, it doesn't feel like an open road. I think when people speed, when there's, feels like a highway, when there are, there's more things, vertical elements, trees, I think people, I hope people slow down. That, that is what we are trying to argue.
Are you still going to have the parking on both sides?
Both sides, correct. The only places where we would remove parking on Crest Ave is to add those raised crossings. Otherwise, parking on both sides remain.
So, can you distinguish between raised crossing and bumps? Some actual, I mean, is a bump?
Yeah, I think the, sure, it's open to interpretation. I would argue a raised crossing feels more generous than a bump. It is at a dimension that is wider than six feet. And, and that effect will add to the plaza condition, which is just a path trap more there. It's significantly more, significantly more generous. Here, it's probably just wide enough to calm traffic, but not necessarily feel like a plaza.
JP, I think it will also be flat so that the pedestrian experience is like, that's where you walk as opposed to a speed hump, which would now be for pedestrians.
Correct, right. There, there wouldn't be a curb cut at those areas. The pedestrian would walk flush, it would never have to go down, walk through the left.
Or go one up.
Or one up.
Yeah, no, I think JP's saying if people cross from one side of Crest Ave to the other, they would want that to be, because the raised crossing is going to...
The raised crossing would be flush with the sidewalk.
But given the mobility of devices or length of mobility, will be able to cross as I know.
I think, hopefully, this encourages activity, cross, crossing, which also will help calm traffic. All these activities...
Yeah, so the handicap access.
And also does that as well. Continuing the street section down, this is on Hillside Ave. This is where it's actually quite tight. And this is the neighbors, but the neighbors immediately adjacent to the East Parcel. This is the John Ave, is a little further in the background. But this happens to be surprisingly, parking on both sides and two-way traffic. It's very, very narrow, and there is no sidewalk on, on the campus side. Dimensionally, we can see how tight that is. Not only that, but there's a large retaining wall on this side. I would argue that that retaining wall feels like it disconnects the campus from its neighbors. It puts its neighbors at arms length. And, and that is another element that we are trying to minimize. We, we need walls because we are dealing with steep topography and a lot of topography. But in fact, the building can act like our wall. And there's not a need to make a tall wall to hold a retaining grade. But by reduce, by removing one lane of traffic, you can add a sidewalk and make us feel more pedestrian-friendly. We don't have the dimensions for adding street trees on both sides. But I, I think this is the minimum that we can do to make this feel better and allow...
It's not just the wall that makes you feel different, the chain link fences too.
Correct. Wouldn't remove the chain link fence. There's no need for it. I think that chain link fence is the area to prevent people from falling.
Well, that's...
This is further down Hillside Ave. This is Kettle, the Kettle Building on our left, Sullivan on our right. And just behind us is the large bridge connecting that overhead. Again, here, there's no sidewalk on the campus side. CLC, future CLC Building is in the distance. And it's, I would say, a broken sidewalk on the Kettle side. So, again, as a pedestrian, it doesn't feel like I can comfortably walk through this area. Nor is it inviting you to its, to its neighbors. So, if this particular street section, these are the dimensions that we were talking about here, this is the area that we think we can add a playground for residents, for the neighborhood. And it's very close to the neighbors that it seems, it seems more accessible. Off in the distance would be the Sullivan Courtyards. There is an area for residents, which perhaps would be more private for them.
About lighting on that area, I hope it's up on the new sidewalk and all that.
Yeah.
Lighting on that side.
Absolutely. We haven't gotten to that level yet, but the intent very much is to add lighting. That's part of what makes the street feel more comfortable. But that is, this is, I believe, Phase Three. So, we're currently at a very conceptual level and for all phases, but schematic level, a little more detail at Phase One, which is the left side of Crest Ave.
Have you had conversations with people who live in those houses?
I guess we have, yes, we have.
So, is this your last?
This is, yeah.
Okay, so is the next one the schematic?
It's the stone part.
Let me quickly come back to... So, just to talk a little bit about what we have done so far. So, in March, we presented kind of an earlier version, but similar conceptually to the Board Justicees at the Veterans Home. We met with the city council. And then we had a neighborhood meeting in April and how we did outreach with that neighborhood meeting as we knocked on doors of neighbors. So, we walked down Warren, we walked down Eleanor, we walked and I think handed out over 100 flyers and a helping meeting in the veteran club. And then since then, we've kind of continued to progress, and we're just at a Town Home meeting today with residents. So, at the neighborhood meeting, the, I think, only concern we heard was about parking. So, just overall...
What concern? That there's not knocking some more, you're taking some away what we've here...
That there's not, not... That there's not, not a parking.
But there's no, oh, there's just a lot of parking.
Yeah.
But I think they were mostly concerned that residents are parking on their street, thinking about their parking. That was what I heard.
So we did ask about what current residents, how many current residents have cars? And 127, 128 residents, about 65, 60, like about half had cars. Just add some context. So in terms of our overall schedule, we would submit, we're hoping to submit in August for a September meeting. And I know we have to go to both the zoning board and the planning board, and this is a special permit, so, yeah. But our goal is to apply, so this is, since this is a affordable housing, we'll have to apply to the state for funding. And when we're awarded funding from the state, there's been a lot of, I think this is a priority for the Commonwealth, so we're very optimistic about getting the resources we need to make this the, kind of, campus for the veterans that we're, kind of, the vision for it. And currently, we're projecting to have phase one start in the late fall, assuming everything goes well. And to have, have each subsequent phase start after the 69-month gap. But for these buildings, the construction period is covered in 16 to 18 months per phase. And that we've committed to having a pre-construction meeting in the neighborhood prior to starting, just so that people are aware of what is happening. Because with affordable housing, there's no hurry up and wait because you're sitting, you sit there waiting to hear back from the state. We want everyone to know when construction is going to start, where our plan is to make sure that the contractor answers all the questions that are going to, like, when are you going to be operating, where are you going to park your cars, like, how are you going to manage dust and noise and things like that, so...
Planning some kind of like a Facebook page or a community page where you can update people on...
So we do have a website, www.theveteranthomechelsea.
About Chelsea, right?
Yes, yes. The website is...
Right, it's operating, okay.
Yes, but do you want to talk a little bit about stormwater? Because I know there, when we did neighborhood meetings, there probably was, maybe, I don't know if that was a neighborhood meeting, but there was a question about like stormwater runoff, so maybe Bill can speak briefly about it.
I hope he can, I could expect that.
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks.
So unfortunately, my portion of the projects was most significant is probably rather more is United Division of State.
Not feeling down the hill?
Which would be?
Not feeling down the hill?
No, no, but it's designed properly, it should work properly, you know, too.
You shouldn't notice it if it's like...
We have a limited site area, we have all the, the four phases of the project, you know, limited sites, so the area is going to be tight, not only for the building of, new building, say, at the townhouse site, or any improvements, you know, that are for each of the, out of the four phases. It's going to be at a premium as to what the contractor can do and so forth. So we will be moving them closely, you know, for lay-down areas, you know, things of that nature, answer, have, you know, at least, at least impact, you know, to any of the residents, whether they're on the flat ground next to us or, you know, down the hill. Most of those sites are all covered, aside by building, walkways, parking lots, you know, so forth. And what we propose is, you know, clean, you know, path. Now, our intent, number also to comply with the Chelsea Stormwater Pilot Orders, I'm sorry, is putting in some infrastructure systems on each of the sites to control some of the stormwater runoff. You know, that does, you know, leave the site to the parking lots, to building trains, you know, things of that nature. You know, from the parking lots, we will have some water quality areas and so forth to clean the water, so the quality of water dischapped from the site will be a full lot cleaner. I don't know who does this right now because there isn't many, if at all, you know, much of a treatments with the stormwater that exists in that site. Now, here is a fire retention system. We anticipate using this type of system down by the townhouse, where the, of those parking areas that were known before for the 18 parking spots, having an area there, a flat area, will be able to catch some water and so forth, limit all those trails down the hill and, you know, capture and discharge it, you know, through all of those into city storm drain lines. Now, we anticipate, you know, reduce the amount of runoff and line runoff from these sites, you know, through the various interneals that we have closing to be installed. There is availability for, to use the utility infrastructure for connections and for storm resistance, erosion controls, you know, that will be, you know, something that will be, the contractor will have to take care of, you know, the life support stuff that they'll have to do once they are in need on the sites, just at the block. They'll need to install sil sets and 50% single or double rolls of erosion tools on some of those steep slopes, superpents, you know, areas, you know, too, especially in the steeper slopes there, just prevent any migration of fines or materials from the property onto the neighborhood property. You know, there will also be insurance that the contractor, you know, does weekly monitoring, you know, especially if it's very strong, things of that nature, to fix anything, you know, what happens if it reaches and so forth. But the contractor will be responsible for, for once he pulls onto the site, you know, it's his responsibility to make sure, but we will work with the contractor until he starts, you know, to ensure that all the, those visual devices are in place and working properly.
Did the neighbors express any concern about water runoff into the property when you had your meeting with them?
I think it was mainly asking about the townhouse, where the townhouses will be. And for that lot, we're not going to be expanding, the area where we're developing is approximate to the area where there is payment right now, so we're not increasing impervious area. And people that ask like, oh, if you're developing that entire lot, like, you're going to create kind of runoff issue, but we're not increasing the impervious area and actually, I think basically the plan, we're actually going to be turning some to kind of brass and green, so we're reducing the impervious area.
Wouldn't it, based on the advanced paper presentation on Crest and all the trees and all, wouldn't it be a good idea to have some reservoir of the runoff water to be able to use to irrigate and some root of trees?
No, the tree lots of rocks and things of that nature. I think it's, we have homesels here in the past in Chelsea, so that's something we consider to look at.
They could also be placed inside below the thermal chambers. So that is another option, and it would also help reduce stormwater as well.
And as I mentioned earlier about the storm drain, there's an interaction for utility infrastructure. As far as, you know, other supports, you know, for the, for the campus, whether it is sewer, water, fire protection, though it's not really my realm, you know, electricity, telecommunications and so forth, it is available, utility infrastructure in Summit, Crest and Hillside for connection too. And we will work with the city Chelsea, you know, for those future connections on the internet. We're actually going to be doing some early hydrotest investigation to determine forwards and wrongness of the water lines for our future, for our initial design of the, to support the buildings.
I think that's, I don't know, the end of our...
I have a slightly camp question. Are you guys proposing something similar in Holio or, or what's happening to the veterans in Holio? Will they be...
Oh, I'm sorry, it's totally out of my for me, but I know they are doing changes there. I don't think that's...
No, I mean, only, I'm thinking more for acts, I mean, I don't know.
Maybe, maybe Robert could actually, I, can you share any of the Holio? I, it's...
That's a really question. Well, what?
No, no, the question is whether, if people are being displaced in Holio, would they be, you'll be having options to come here as well, is I guess the question, I don't know if you want to go to Holio or Chelsea, but...
It's a, it's an extreme question, but they will be people displaced in...
So Holio is now, you know...
We are rebuilding, we are building replacement facility, but we are not going to impact the existing structure.
Okay, so they would, you would, we have to...
No, no.
That's all, yeah, no.
No, it's a great question. I mean, it's always the thought, thought question, the concern, and that's not the case.
And right now, the people who live there are primarily, primarily single. You don't, there aren't, are there families?
There are no families living there right now.
So the whole point is just to change the, a bit of the approach and have families be there as well.
And yeah, I think the way the Veterans Home is currently operated will be different in that for us, when we operate them, they'll be no different than any other apartment, except they're the veterans apartments and provide veteran services. I think right now, there are rules around what you, like, visitors and how long people can be away and things like that, that are, be taught probably because of like certain funding sources, VA and other things like that. But they'll be developed projects, you should see as, you know, different from a regular apartment where someone can live in a two-bedroom and have families. Yeah.
Yeah, when, we recently had a number of meetings with the residents and that's new for our project management team. And one of the questions that was received was, I believe it's a husband, but that a husband lives on, currently, in the Chelsea home, and his wife lives elsewhere. And I hadn't thought that in this new configuration, they could actually be reunited and he could still receive those veteran services that he's using. So that was, it was an element that I hadn't thought of when looking at these single room occupancies, that, that there may still be families that would like to be reunited. So this gives a little bit more options in that.
And how are you going to choose what veteran council in this building, so apartments, how that prize is going to be like lottery?
Yeah, so, because this is going to receive state funding, all Massachusetts affordable housing projects have to go through a lottery. But even though, even though it's a lottery, we can still implement a preference so that everyone that enters the lottery, everyone who's a veteran gets pushed up to the top.
But technically, so we don't, all affordable housing? I mean, but technically, so to anybody who is qualified for affordable housing?
Yes, that's correct.
Perhaps.
Yeah, it would be illegal for us to not...
So for example, for phase one, if we had 70 veterans apply, even if we had 1,000 applicants, those 70 veterans would be at the top of the list and get with the unit.
And in addition to that, the existing veterans get even the higher priority in the veteran population.
Prefer to the preference.
So they get first, they get first.
And everyone who's in, like, for example, there's individuals living in Williams, because they have to move out and go to enable phase one, they have even higher preference than every other existing resident because they were directly impacted and had to be moved off. So there's preference on top of preference on top of preference.
So maybe a question for the veteran, so, so I assume that some of these people, if they're moved, are going to need assistance in moving. I mean, many of these people are not, they're older and they're...
Yes.
So they would be assistance helping them?
Yes, yes. So we are required to, as a public project, and a project that receives public funding has to comply with both federal and state relocation laws. We have to have a designated relocation consultant that will come in and assess everyone individually so what their needs are, but yes, all moving costs are covered. In addition to that, four years, for four years, they receive rent differential. So anything above what they pay today, if they do pay something above today, would be covered by the state capital funds that's required.
Is it going to be minimum on the lease on the apartments?
A minimum lease?
So the typical leases are one-year leases.
One year. And they, and what, what level of affordability are they tagged at?
So it's, we're trying to create a mix between 30% of area median income up to, I think, the Russian proposal had 100, 120% of area median income. Our goal is to secure resources, to have rental subsidies for all the existing residents that qualify for a project-based voucher, to have voucher, move into units with vouchers attached to them so that they'll never pay more than 30% of their income in rent.
Okay, so that, so again, it just, it's, this is more a question for making sure that the people who are there, who, who are living, are, are not paying very much in their rent or not difference.
So that, I mean, that covers everything. So for example, you know, if there's someone there who has over income, you would then make sure that person is...
Okay, so they can...
But there aren't market rate units.
Yeah, so that's clear.
It's 100%.
It's a, it's a 100%.
Tamia, you guys have a number of the trees that are going to be planted and what kind of trees?
We have not notified, but it would be mostly, it would be primarily native trees, combination oats, mangoes.
Hey, we should let John figure that out. We should let John figure that out.
John wants to count.
Trees and lighting. Any other questions?
The cafe is going to be to the public, very open to the public.
So as I said earlier, this is not a public meeting, hearing, it's a public meeting. So I'd like to show up hands of people who might be interested in speaking on this. If there's anybody here in the public who wants to speak on it. Okay, I'm going to allow that to happen. Five minutes. So introduce yourself, your name and address.
Okay, can I go there because I can use some of the slides?
You can ask them to do something with the slides. Although 20...
What do you, what slide you want to go to?
I would like to go, because I have a laundry here.
Well, again, five minutes.
You tell me when it is, when I, I can sample. So first of all, my name is Konstantinos Pousios, and I live 6911 Street, which is like here, I think it's Mastodon, okay, so very close to the neighborhood. And so first of all, I'd like, I mean, I'm speaking as a naturalized US citizen.
And I'm going to remind you one at a time, whatever you say here, you're going to have to say again at the public meeting, so at the public hearing. So this is, this is a totally separate...
Yeah, I'm just, just speaking to everybody.
Right, no, but I just want you to know that just what you say here, you have to say all over again, just to...
No problem at all. And so I have the gratitude for these people who have basically made the ultimate sacrifice for all of us, particularly for somebody like myself. And when I spoke with them, they were very... I spoke with them because I'm putting, I put my papers to run for city council for that this thing. And there's going to be a lottery where everybody's going to be the same pool. They're going to, they're going to receive like in the MBE lottery where the team has hired a number of guards, but in the end, there's no guarantee at all that these people are going to get residents there.
But you just said that there was.
There is.
There was a guarantee.
So they're not in the lottery.
The people who live there get first preference no matter what, is what you said.
So it's better as preference, so let's forget what they, that's what news, by the way. And the other news is that you expect that they're not going to pay any more than 30% of their income. Some of those who are very low income. Now, you're asking for the approval before they're secure that they're not going to pay any more than 30% of their income.
That's why I just asked, that's why I just asked that question. I said, JP, no, no, that's like, that's what we, normally, this wouldn't happen at the boarding, but, and I'm telling, because I asked that question about if they don't qualify, would they still be entitled to make sure that they're, you know, if either they have low, then come off, quite frankly, have a little bit more. I want to make sure that they're not in a negative situation and I was just assured that they get. If you're here, you get...
You're very, very small, right? Good, but the 30% is possible, the, excuse me, the 30% of what they're making, that's no guarantee yet. You have to apply to the state for that. Another big issue is not happening. So we're first going to apply, build everything, get the approval, then we'll go to the state. So these people won't be let out if the state... So these people are going to be left out if the state does not provide a subsidy.
Do you want to clarify that with the end?
So we've actually been in talks for years about this. So yes, they have to apply individually, and they don't apply until they have the right to build it. But we've already been in a number of discussions with the Department of Housing and Community Development that has become an executive office, and with administration, administration and finance. It's well orchestrated.
So let me clarify, we're not going to build it before we secure the rental subsidies for the residents because we need to make sure that we, when we have very low-income units, we don't expect, we know that those individuals are more vulnerable to economic shocks, and we need to make sure that they are stable in their housing so we secure rental subsidies for the lowest-income units before we start construction.
Okay, that's good. So we have to take that out. So there's going to be, there has to be a contingency plan because otherwise, we're almost going to think that now then we'll be able to stay there. So because if it cannot be like 30% of the disposal of their income, then they cannot stay there. So whether it's human preference or not, they cannot stay there. So this has to be guaranteed. So that's, that's on our... Now I'm going to go, I'm going to speak a little bit as a... About that. And there is... So regarding that, okay. Your tenants that are right now is 0.5 cars per resident, right? And that's what you're building for. But you're going to have residents that are more working. Meals are not going to be provided. People will have jobs. So they're going to need cars. So 0.5 cars per resident is not going to be enough per unit, actually, not per resident, per unit. With a new plan, it's not going to be enough. We all live in the same world, right? Let them know that you're going to take away all this parking for his side yard and all this parking for his side yard. On one side of his side yard, we'll be taking away so many parking spots. So the net will be probably nothing, to be honest. So this is always...
Will you close it to the parking and both, will you close it that parking and be one side?
On one side.
You want it to do the sidewalk?
To the sidewalk.
All of this is going to be taken away. Then what is going to be, the plus is going to be, I mean, the net will be 0.2 per unit. So that's enough. And those units will be inhabited by people who will have morning cup. They will not have the meals they have to take. They will not have the medical care, the social care that they have to take. So they will need cars. How else are they going to do? So that's, that's in a sense, fair. Okay, you're talking about trees, okay?
Give me a couple more minutes, but that's it. Because you're going to say this all over.
There's a data, you can, let me, send you a... But this one, okay. Why not keep it empty? This one, put trees here. That one empty, here, put trees there. Then you, then this one, we saw the view from the street. It's massive even when you look at it from the street. This is past, this is the new, the new building. It's going to offer what everybody here. It's going to offer from up, if you're, from this management point, this will look huge. And so why do we make it so big? Then the other day, I was working at the, you know, Center Lab down here. There's this housing redevelopment, so on and so forth. Center of redevelopment, I think that the defense was a capital. And there, a massive space, they're building a six-floor parking garage. Six-floor parking garage, you know, to accommodate the needs of the residents. And here, we're not doing anything. And I spoke the other day to the state, and I said, the state wants to build units, but it's not going to build parking. So you want to build all these extra places? And no parking, no... So that's going to be disastrous for the neighborhood because these people are going to park somewhere. Where are they going to park? The streets. And that's, let me see what that's...
Do you have a number of how many spaces there will be total?
They gave us a number earlier.
Yeah, the housing, the maintenance of Center Lab, six-story parking garage.
121.
121?
Spaces, yeah.
I think it's 200, so?
There's 200 in the apartment.
241 units.
Minus this. Minus this, these are going to go away.
The 121 doesn't count the off-street parking. It only counts the off, like, no, 121 is off-street parking.
Yeah, but the net parking, you're going to take away parking spots. You're adding 121, but they're taking away another 50.
No, no, that is another 88, but they said total on-street is 88, so that's...
But that's not, that's only counting across out this, this...
That's already there. So here, the net from the on-street parking is going to be net negative, 50 or so. And they're going to add, I don't know, the net positive, I don't know, it's going to be the off-street parking, net positive.
I think that's a good question to prepare for the zoning board is, what's the net change? So if you're, so you're saying that there's a total of us on-street of 88, but how many are there now? I think that would be, that would be information that is important to have.
So, you know, I may have more things to say.
You can say them all you want at the zoning board. And you don't need to get five minutes, you can give as much time as you want then.
Thank you. And I know that, I know that a lot of my neighbors are very, very concerned, but they will strike a two-day notification for this thing, so not many.
But again, I make sure that your neighbors know that this is only to begin, this is an informational meeting.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that they, when they come to the course in September, everybody, they will get the notice and you will be able to say all.
Yeah, and please, we would like to see in the next meeting, right, what we would like to see is that, you know, how is this whole lottery thing is going to work? Obviously, we understand how that's going to work, it's not going to be just veterans. It's going to be anybody who has veterans. So the veterans, except those who are there already, but it's not going to be, the veterans' preference is like a very grandiose word for what's really going to happen, which is not going to be veterans' preference.
Well, I think, I think again, I think there's a law that they have to follow. And the law is that if some, if 20 people apply and the last three on that list are veterans, they get to go to the top if the other 17 aren't.
Go to the top, that's not mean that they're going to get before the others. It means that they will have more, a higher...
There's only enough, you can only put enough people in there if there are rooms. I mean, if more than more veterans apply then they're actually available.
So that's a good question, man. So are the veterans, so let's say that there are 200 units, right? There's 300 veterans applying and 5,000 non-veterans. Are the 300 veterans going to have those 200 units?
The 300 veterans are at the top of the list, so their applications get reviewed first and then your other applicant, then you get a lease if you move in.
They don't determine that. They don't, you guys, I mean, there's a form who gets to determine, like, affordable housing gets to choose.
So there's an income, you have to check your income.
All checked?
Yeah.
Everything checked?
Then that veteran moves in.
So 300, so the lottery...
If there's 200 units and there's 300 veterans, 200 with 300 veterans will get it.
Okay, so there's no lottery for that?
It is still lottery because of the 300, how we chose, choose who goes in, right?
I just wanted to understand the form. Okay, let's say that there's 200 units, 200 veterans who satisfy the requirements.
All 200 move in.
All 200 move in. They're not going to go into a lottery with anybody else.
They had to come into a lottery to start because they have to be part of the lottery. But as soon as they have a veteran, it's the law, they can't pick. Everybody who's affordable has to go into a lottery. Then the people who have a veterans' preference go to the top of that lottery. They pass by.
And sometimes the term lottery, it is almost applied to every applicant, even though we're not actually pulling names right now. That's, that's what affordable housing, the term they use...
They have to use that, right.
Is called a lottery. But the actual picking of it, you have to go by the preferences, who has to go first. You'll sort all of your applicants, figure out who is in each category. So who are existing veterans? Who are the next group of veterans? And then who is everyone else? And then you would start a lottery from there for who is most qualified. Is that a fair enough assessment? Please correct me. You work closer to this than I do.
So they're part of the lottery, but if there's 200 units and only, and 200 veterans apply, the 200 veterans will be the ones that are...
So those 200 veterans who apply will not have been through any lottery enough, just by means of being...
Okay, all right, all right. Pass your five minutes, no. There is a lottery, that's the law. If you are a veteran, you go to the top of that lottery and you get picked like there's no lottery. That's, so that's how it works.
Yeah, that is something very important. Also, I would like to make a last question.
Hurry up, this is it.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to ask you. When you come to the zoning board, could you please show a view of this parcel from this side? From this management point? Because that's going to make me...
That's a good question. So try to give a street view.
I would suggest you do some more homework.
I will.
But thank you. Again, you got to say all, yeah. Now you've been warned, so you know what he's going to be saying when we get to him. So be prepared, but you know, but again, I, because there weren't a lot of people, I gave you the opportunity. But I just, I think it was a good preview for what you should be preparing. And I think it's a good question, though. You know, we hear about the lottery all the time. You guys live with the lottery all the time. It makes sense for us, but it doesn't necessarily. And I think clearly, he's made it clear, his concern is ensuring that these veterans are taken care of. That's all he wants to know, so that's what I...
I think for the majority, the word lottery to us people, because the lottery winners lose, so that's, the lottery is the word.
Well, that's why I said to describe it. It doesn't matter, it's like, there's a lottery. There's a lottery.
It's a, it's a random selection.
Yes, but the, well, because, well, I think it's fair to say that the, right, the lottery makes it sound like it's the luck of the draw. But the reality is, you know, we do, we deal with affordable housing in Chelsea all the time, and there are always many more applicants than there are units. And people get chosen based on whatever set of criteria are applied, whether it's Chelsea preference, whether, who's the most in need, whatever. So we reckon, but so there's a group of people that has to be part of this. What are the words you use if you get to call it something, so? Grommet.
My mind is trying to how to write this down.
So, I mean, I think this has been helpful. Does anybody want to say anything else? Okay, do I have to, I guess, do I need to...
Just, I mean, do you guys have any feedback? This is really, we're trying to get...
Well, I think, what we, I think you heard a little bit already what the feedback is. I think, you know, we want some better information on diet looks, better information on the net change in parking. You know, clarify what the whole veterans' look is. Like, I think that the information on the pervious and impervious is helpful. I think, you know, again, we recently had a case that was very, we're drained, what was happening in the neighborhood below was really important. So I would like to see more information on how you work on the imperative impervious services, pervious versus impervious services. You know, I know we've asked about issues related to what the tree should look like. We recognize that for the most part, landscape plans and lighting plans are something that come a little further in the process, and we leave off into the department. But, you know, as much as you can provide on that would be helpful. Just, you know, again, we're not looking at, we're going to look at sycamores here and maples there. We're not asking for that. It's just a matter of where you're looking at that. And I think talking about how you can create those to also be areas that will pick up water, that's there, that's fine. And again, I think clarifying the issues that relate to light linking into the city system, if that's allowed, because that, you can say all you want, that it's allowed, that you want to link into the city system. I don't know if there's legal authority.
You'll get comments when I write it, I hope you'll see comments on the site.
Joe, did you have something?
Well, the other thing is, the whole process will be six years. And with the AI, how many people are going to lose their jobs so they won't need a car?
I mean, and, you know, the reality is parking is always an issue. And he's also made a very valid point that we went from people who don't have a lot of parking, because they don't have a lot of resources, who are living there now, to when you bring families into the mix, you're going to be bringing people with cars. So, you know, that's always, and parking is always an issue, and particularly when you're this close to a community, that is concerned about.
I think, and I think towards that end, you know, we manage a lot of developments and we're very comfortable with the park situation here. And we need to demonstrate to you that we are based on the population.
And we hear that all the time, so you show us all you, why you're...
Well, it's also on us, right? I mean, if we don't provide our parking, people aren't going to want to live there, right? So, you know, it's a, it's a resiliency perspective. And we're very confident that this will be a place that people want to live and want to be. And if, you know, people may choose to live here that don't want a car, right? This is an urban area, and people may try to survive in the place.
Well, I think in that, and that relates then also to the public trans, you know, Chelsea has no public transportation. And make sure, I don't, I don't know what, what spots goes up to the top of the hill. The ones that, those everywhere.
They, do they know they won't be participating in the parking sticker program here? Do we discuss that?
So I think that was something that should we talk about the waiver here?
Sorry, there too.
You might be trying to wait for them.
So right now, there is 127 residents that live here at, they park right here. And for the residents that live here, there's 127, many of them have disabilities. I think even if we're like, we have a parking spot for you right here or right here, it's, to me, I mean, I think to the veterans, it would seem like we're taking something away from them. Where they get to park right now here, and they get to get into their unit, they'll have to go all the way here. So I think that with 121, and if we only count the Crest Avenue, that's 185. Because, I mean, most residents, I think most residents who live here, they should either throw two spots. It is kind of, I would say, in my opinion, a bit of a trick for them to go all the way down here to park. But 121 plus 64 is 185 for the 241 spaces. Like, that's, I think, we want to make an argument that our veterans should be able to park right here or press out where they're not necessarily competing with the neighbors.
Yes, but that doesn't, well, but if they are, the neighbors want to know that they have access to the parking. Parking, parking is an issue, always an issue.
So that would be part of the special parking.
And how many, okay, this is, so in, how many handicap parking spaces do you think they have per se? Because that seems to be one of the things, and that would probably be helpful with that. If you're talking people who still do.
We should get a couple of existing too, because they're, right?
I would expect that there are.
Yeah, they exist, yeah.
Anything else?
No.
All right. Anybody else ready for, okay, well, do we make, do we need a motion for the...
Make a motion that they...
Second, you go.
Mine.
Thank you very much.